Good morning, the time is now 9:34 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of April 11th, 2023 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, could I have a motion for the base agenda? Dr. Pritchett moves the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lipton. Is there any discussion of the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
Oh, is that, is the vote on?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning, everyone. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table are Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB Delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakmoss, Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, and Ms. Nanette Hansen, the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Seated behind them is Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. Coming back to the table, to my right are Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us today Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor Ex officio.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. The public may register to provide public comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1 o'clock. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1 o'clock today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage, again, at www.michigan.gov/MDE. Well, it's 9:36 and the first presentation during our committee, the whole meeting, is from our Student Advisory Council, five members of our Student Advisory Council, who will share their experiences and thoughts with you. As a local superintendent for 17 years, I met monthly with the Student Advisory Council at each of my high schools. In my first year as State Superintendent, I had been reflecting upon ways to benefit from student voice in the department when George Floyd was murdered in the spring of 2020. This tragedy prompted my call to superintendents across the state to recommend students to participate in discussions with me and others in the department on how schools could be more inclusive and welcoming. That initial student group, which met first in the fall of 2020, has become a standing advisory council, which has evolved over the past three years into a group of students nominated by their school district leaders or current Student Advisory Council members, who meet virtually with me and members of the MDE staff, Renee Garcia, Allison Shrewsbury, Brucheryl Bailey, and Bieberahas Mills each month. I am very happy to have some of our student members here today, not virtually, but alive and in person today to talk more about their experiences as students and to provide an overview of the council's history, its current work, and the importance of this work. To respect their privacy, we are not sharing their last names or school districts. We welcome our presenters, Olivia, Kason, Ayet, Kyla, and Lysia from the Student Advisory Council. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Student presenters, welcome. We're delighted to have you here.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Olivia. As Dr. Rice mentions, the Michigan Department of Education Student Advisory Council, also known as the SAC, was started by our State Superintendent, Dr. Rice, in 2020 after the murder of George Floyd. He contacted superintendents to request they nominate students. He gratefully accepted eager and willing middle and high school students who were dedicated to improving the Michigan public education system. Once we were established, we started right away by holding virtual meetings every month via videoconferencing, and we identified six priorities that we all agreed with and wanted to strive toward. Our six priorities were: A more inclusive history curriculum that includes the contributions of people of color as well as the barriers that created systemic racism; Inclusion of a requirement for cultural studies, social justice, and current events; More diverse education workforce, which means hiring more teachers of color; Equitable funding to ensure all districts have what is needed to meet students' needs; Creating safe spaces for students to talk about racism; And training for educators around bias and racism. After we established our priorities, we began to discuss which topic or project we should focus on. We discussed many things as a group, but in the end, we collectively decided to direct all of our focus to create a "How to Create Safe Spaces" guidance for schools. We then began investigating through many avenues, such as listening tours, conversation, and we began to research what a safe space is, why students need a safe space to speak about race and racism, and how a safe space is made. Additionally, each year, we welcome even more students who are interested and excited about the work that we are doing, and we have also graduated many students and celebrated their successes. Next, Lysia will talk about our meeting norms.
We here at the SAC have a set of values and norms that are reviewed in every meeting that we conduct. We, as a council, collectively decided these norms. While I could go through the process of how we came up with them, I think it's important to understand why, as a council, we chose to implement these norms. We always strive to have a all-inclusive, empathetic to everyone's experience, and open to all ideas. Simply, we, as the students, felt that having standards for ourselves was a surefire way to achieve a supportive and open environment in our meetings. It is so essential for our team to be objective and nonjudgmental. We often discuss some topics that can be seen as taboo, such as race and diversity. These norms are in place to ensure that all points of view are valued. Now, I will turn this over to Ayet to continue.
One norm we have is called "Ouch/Oops Educate." This is a way where we hold one another accountable while also educating each other in a positive manner. The "ouch" is where somebody speaks up about something that was said or done that really hurt them. The "oops" is where that person acknowledges what they did and takes accountability for it, understanding that they hurt somebody without meaning to. The "educate" is where that person understands why they said or did was offensive and is able to move forward with that information, knowing that they made a mistake. Implementing this norm is how we are able to promote empathy and educate one another in a positive manner. This, overall, maintains an open and comforting atmosphere in our meetings. Now, onto Kason, who will talk about what the Student Advisory Council is currently focusing on.
For the last three school years, the Michigan Department of Education Student Advisory Council has met once a month. Each meeting has a different student facilitator, who helps to run the meeting, spark discussion, and pursue the set agenda. There are adult members of MDE present, but the meeting is purely student-run, with the adults present to provide documents and information necessary for the meeting to flow smoothly. At each meeting, we conduct an icebreaker, and then we get into our work. We've spent time discussing diversity in literature in the classroom with State Superintendent Dr. Rice, asking us to share our experiences. During these extremely relevant conversations, we've shared about reading material in our history and English language arts classes and their effects on students. A handful of SAC members were even invited to speak on a panel at MDE's Diversity in Literature Conference in March. Another major point of discussion that the group focused on last year was safe spaces, and we used our meetings to share and reflect on experiences surrounding safe spaces to spark development for our resource. At most meetings, Dr. Rice takes the floor for a few minutes, allowing SAC members to ask questions about what's going on inside the MDE. The questions often pertain to what's happening in our schools. This time, although maybe 10 minutes, is extremely important because it allows for a direct pipeline between students and Dr. Rice, the students understanding more about MDE's efforts, and Dr. Rice learning about the students' questions, needs, ideas, and perspectives. Toward the end of each meeting, we have time to ask questions to the MDE staff members present. We call this time "MDE Connections." MDE staff with their own unique positions are present at these meetings, each with their own insight into what's going on within the Department of Education. This share-out time with the staff allows for us to learn about what the MDE is working on in detail, and us council members can ask questions and share stories to help provide a student outlook to current MDE projects. Now, we will all share our thoughts on topics important to us. First up is Lysia.
Hello, today I will be discussing literacy. Early childhood literary development is crucial. Reading sets the tone for everything going forward. I know this because I had to play catch-up myself. When I was in first grade, I struggled with hearing issues that set me back for a couple of years. What made the process of me learning how to read and comprehend literature even more difficult was the lack of support from my teachers and the use of negative language. Collaboratively, all these aspects of negativity didn't prevent me from learning how to read. It just stifled my ability to feel safe enough to express my struggles so I could get the help I needed soon. If I had more successful experiences in my first and fourth grade years, I wouldn't have had to play catch-up in my education. With that being said, I have come to believe that the job of an educator is to help expand on what a student already knows in hopes to help the student gain more knowledge. Teachers can correlate new topics back to what students already know in order to help retain information more efficiently. An example of relatability to literature we discuss in the SAC is mirror and window books. A mirror or window book is a book that you either see yourself in or you get an insight on someone else's point of view. When talking about mirror and window books, students get to see themselves in literature, and they are more engaged and willing to take criticism. Taking criticism in a positive way helps students learn from their mistakes and how to figure out their own solutions to their challenges. When talking about the importance of students taking time to understand a topic or even being able to understand why they might be struggling with literary concepts, it is essential to a child's journey through education. In our educational system, we have a set of materials students have to understand to move forward in their education called a curriculum. Curriculum-based learning is a great starting point. Being comfortable is important, and a curriculum can offer that, but it's just that, a starting point. When talking about a classroom environment, you want students to feel free to make mistakes and solve problems in their own way. A curriculum tells you what they need to know, but it doesn't tell you how an individual needs to learn that information. When talking about a literary curriculum, a student needs to know how to read, write, and comprehend, but finding a better way than telling a student to just sit down and read a book can overall contribute to the success of a student long-term. Overall, when a student is more engaged in reading and writing by seeing their culture or representation of themselves reflected in their education, they absorb new topics better by being able to use their personal experiences to connect to their new learning. Thank you. Next, we have Olivia and Kason talking about health, safety, and wellness.
In SAC, one of our most important goals is to strive to improve the health, safety, and wellness of all students, much like number three on Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. By making these documents for educators and students alike, our goal is to create safe spaces for students to talk about race, racism, and any other topic without being judged. Creating these safe spaces for students is crucial when trying to improve and/or preserve their mental health. When someone bottles up all of their frustration and sadness inside of them, it can oftentimes have repercussions on their mental health. Studies say that not expressing emotion and having a safe space to confide with people can cause depression, anxiety, exhaustion, and intense feelings of loneliness. Studies also found that students without a safe space end up being less successful. Overall, and students who do. Right now, many people of color and underrepresented groups of people don't have a person or place to go to where they feel like they can truly be themselves. Our goal at SAC is to reduce this number by striving to make that safe space for everyone. Even in my experience, I felt a strong shift in my mental health from when I felt that I didn't have a safe space to when I did. In elementary and early middle school, I didn't have someone to talk to, and I felt that they would judge me or make me feel less than others. Toward the end of middle school, I found a friend group that was extremely supportive of me and interacted with me in my talks about race and racism more than anyone else ever had. We could relate to each other, and we spoke about our pain with each other in a way that alleviated it. Additionally, in high school, I found an entire organization called the Black Student Union, which made me feel safe and supported when trying to navigate the new halls of high school. I noticed that I felt more motivated to go to school, less irritable with my family and friends, and that I handled my various assignments and projects much better than before. Now to Kason.
I've seen firsthand what the lack of a safe space can do to a student and how it affects life at school, at home, in the community, and with their friends. One of my friends was in a dark place a few years ago, and after turning to our school wellness counselor for help, the counselor's safe space helped her recover, and now she's able to enjoy life again, something that her friends, including myself, were afraid she'd never be able to do. It's an honor to work with this diverse group of students, speaking up about things that go unseen by educators in our schools, and being offered the opportunity to give educators a student's perspective on safe spaces and mental health. Without a positive learning environment, a student cannot learn effectively, and as a council, we hope that our safe spaces resource can provide a window into what today's students may need. The students in this group come from all across the state, each with our own backgrounds, which affect how we view our environment at school. This diversity benefits our council, and together, we strive to properly represent the diverse student body of Michigan. Next up is Ayet.
As a child of immigrants, I was fortunate to be born in the United States because of the opportunities I have received through my education. Unlike my parents, I could assume my bachelor's degree and eventually go to medical school if I'm accepted. I attend an early college program. The early college has definitely helped me and offered me many opportunities that a regular high school hasn't. Currently, I am a part of the health sector of my school, and I'm taking two college classes. One of these college classes takes place every Wednesday at a health facility. We have the opportunity to shadow patient-staff interactions and perform basic health procedures, such as handwashing and taking blood pressure. This hands-on class that we are provided not only stimulates our minds, but it allows for a different way of learning for students that do not work well in traditional classrooms, something that's not offered in other high schools. At the end of my five years, I will be able to graduate with an associate's degree and my high school diploma. A peak, a perk of early college is that we get early access to college classes and college programs. I plan on completing the nursing program, and considering I am a year ahead of my other peers at other high schools, I will be able to work as a nurse at 18 years old. In this way, early college has provided me with opportunities I would not have been able to receive elsewhere. It has given me a glimpse of a career in health and how I may approach it. Since the curriculum is formatted in a way where we are meant to depend on ourselves, it has encouraged me to become independent and seek out resources so I may excel in college. We will now hear from Kyla.
I've always been very passionate about creating change in my community, but I haven't always had the resources to do so. The youth perspective is often overlooked, even when the issues at hand, like inclusivity in classrooms or dialogue about racism, directly affect students. But the SAC has been a unique opportunity to contribute my voice, perspective, and knowledge to a project I know will have a direct impact on my community. I have the chance to connect and learn from diverse students across the state, which is extremely valuable to me coming from a majority-white town. During our conversations, I feel supported by others in similar situations, and it reminds all of us that we aren't alone, that so many teens and adults care about making social change as much as I do. Our group is a safe space for me, and I feel genuine excitement to join a Zoom call with all the members despite the Zoom burnout from online learning. And my joy is amplified because it is shared among every student on our council who finds support and opportunity in our group. In addition, not only can I contribute to a greater conversation, the insight from my fellow members has shown me valuable perspective I can bring back to my school's Diversity and Inclusion Club and to my community as a whole. Of course, we're also working hard to finalize our resource on safe spaces that I know could be introduced to my own school one day. I'm contributing to something that might impact my younger siblings, cousins, and students in my hometown. And when I get overwhelmed by negative news stories or insensitive experiences, our work at SAC gives me hope to keep fighting. And finally, engaging in diverse conversation of ethnicity, gender, religion, et cetera, is an absolutely necessary and valuable experience for everyone, myself included. I've grown more empathetic and learned how to be more inclusive in my thinking and practices as I hear from perspectives I've never experienced. We learn from each other here and take the next step to teach educators and students how they can create the same safe environment. I know every member would agree that this experience will last way beyond our time at the council, and our voices will not be left unheard. Now, we will each share our closing thoughts.
SAC is a group of extremely talented, dedicated, and inspiring students that reside in Michigan's education system, who offer an extremely valuable piece to improving the education system: student voice. What could be better than hearing and receiving guidance directly from the source? As we have all said today, we strive to improve the quality and well-being of all of our students in the education system, whether it be through literacy, safety, secondary learning opportunities, or several other avenues.
Being a part of the SAC has opened me up to a whole new world, allowing me to notice what's going on in our schools and giving me the tools to speak up about what I see. Connecting with students who want our schools to be safe spaces for everyone lets me share my own perspective and additionally incorporate the perspectives of others into mine, helping me to see beyond the surface and identify what needs to change in our schools.
Although I am a senior this year and won't be working with the group next year, I will carry my experience, perspective, and memories with me throughout the rest of my educational and personal journey. The SAC has given me new skills and also inspired me greatly. I think everyone should be excited for the projects, knowledge, and passion that these students will bring in the upcoming years.
This group has given me the opportunity to embrace new perspectives from people of different backgrounds. It has helped me realize that education is not just about teaching kids lessons from a curriculum, but also teaching kids how to embrace one another's differences and grow accustomed to voicing opinions and staying true to your beliefs. It's about teaching kids to stand up for what they believe is right and being able to thrive in a world so diverse.
Overall, this diverse and well-versed, excuse me, overall, this group of diverse and well-versed individuals have not only helped me gain a safe space to vocalize my truths, it's also helped me gain a different approach and viewpoint when it comes to others' experiences with education. Today has especially shown me that we are starting to make a difference by being able to speak live into our expectations for the future of education. With all of that being said, I would just like to take my final moment to thank you all for being here and listening to us share our perspectives and hopes to aid in bettering classroom environments.
You can take a deep breath, well done. Board members, questions or comments for our students? Ms. Snyder?
Yes, very well done. Can you remind me of your name?
Lysia.
Okay, Lysia. Let's talk literacy. Reforming education, our public education system starts with your story.
Of course.
Don't ever stop telling it. We have spent decades doing exactly what you just said, walking away from direct, explicit, individual instruction and asking students to take a blanket and a stuffed animal and a book that interests them and look at pictures and guess the words. And you know personally that that doesn't work. Don't stop telling your story. Your name?
Ayet.
Awesome that you're going to be a nurse at 18. Consider the opportunities. There are so many more out there, a nurse practitioner, physician's assistant. Don't stop. Stay positive. There's a serious nursing shortage in the state of Michigan. You can be a part of helping that with your attitude. And remember that when you provide services to all people in the state of Michigan, it does not matter who they are or where they came from. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members?
I just want to-
I'm sorry, Mr. Bullock and Ms. Lipton, go ahead.
Just say, great job. I wish I had a group like this when I was in middle school, high school. I don't know how that would have turned out for me, but you guys talked about your safe space and things like that, which is critical. Something we've learned over time, it's critical to have a safe space. And you guys all were very comfortable and articulate and familiar with the information, and I just commend you guys for working well together. I would like to know where each one of you are from and what high school you attend, and where you're going to go, if you know all that.
Just to note that we agreed with them that we would do first names only.
I didn't ask for it.
And we'd be as relatively anonymous as possible because we don't necessarily know that everybody is going to be as supportive of inclusivity as you are, Mr. Bullock.
Accepted.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Ms. Lipton, thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you so much. I really learned a lot. The question I have is, you really spoke well and helped me understand the way that the advisory committee works together, how you work with the department. I'm curious to know how it's been received in terms of, nothing specific, but in general, can you help me understand how your experiences have been received by your school settings? In other words, have the schools incorporated any type of student voice? Or are you able to get information from fellow students that you can then bring to the advisory committee? Have you seen any changes in your individual school communities that, you know, has sort of allowed you to act as an even greater advocate for the student voice in your schools? Just to give you an example, I know some school districts are incorporating student members, if not voting members on school boards, but at least to participate in school boards. So I'm just curious, have you seen any ability to interact with your schools and your student peers to bring information to the commission?
Yeah, I can start us off real quick. I mentioned briefly that my school has already established their own sort of safe space, specifically for discussions on diversity and inclusion. And that space, I can have really good discussions and get a sense of my school's climate. That's sort of my way of how I bring information to now this larger group with students across the state, not just in my own small town. And I think that, like, that already established club and the work that we're putting into this resource just shows how, not how easy, but how simple it is to establish these safe spaces in other schools. And it really only takes one person, one of our many, many members on our board, to be that, be inclusive and reach out to other students and give them that small, safe space. And I know from my own experience, and I'm sure everyone agrees, that there are so many more passionate students out there that aren't just on this council. And I know that I learn from my peers every day and learn from all the members here every day, and that all just helps me in my community and when I'm talking on the board as well.
I can intervene on this real quick. Although my school does not really have a council implemented for an open, safe space, I've taken so many opportunities given from the SAC to create my own in a way. Being observant and just bringing my new perspective that I've learned from every single one of these individuals at the table have helped me not only bring back what I have observed to this lovely group of people, but also have a different viewpoint and change and perspective when conducting any conversation with a student. Now that I know that it can be difficult for kids to really feel safe in schools, especially in an environment that I come from, it is not always easy for a student to get that safe space. So just being able to work with this group has given me that opportunity to help branch out to my school as well.
And to add on to that, the doc- And to add on to that, the document that we mentioned previously, how to create safe space guidelines, I know in previous years, the Student Advisory Council has taken anecdotes from other schools and from students. And we've implemented those experiences into that guideline so that we can use it as a way to create safe spaces that are based off of those student experiences.
Yeah, and I realized when I was in middle school, we really didn't have that sort of space to speak with people. But once I hit high school, I realized how they started implementing all of these clubs and organizations where people could get into, like what I mentioned, the Black Student Union, there's the Gay Straight Alliance, and there's just a lot of organizations that people can go to. And like I yet mentioned, on the Safe Space Guidance Document that we are currently making right now, I take a lot of anecdotes, anecdotes from many people in the Black Student Union. I've interviewed a lot of people from there. And I take a lot of their information and their experiences to kind of help show a more diverse perspective.
At my school, I'm on the Student Advisory Council for my high school. We have members from every club and every organization present. I'm one member from each. And just like this group here, the MDE Council, the things we talk about at my school, I learn new perspectives, learn new things that I bring up to this council. And the things we discuss here, I bring back to my school to share with our administrators, counselors, students. And it's like this whole web of perspectives intertwined, bringing things from here and there, from all these perspectives from everywhere and from my own school.
It just shows how important it is to prioritize in our, in our education, in our schools, creating those opportunities for youth to gather and communicate with adults and educators more frequently or on a regular basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other, other board members? Dr. Pugh?
Thank you all. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for the service that you're providing to the state of Michigan. And I guess my question is maybe more to you, Dr. Rice. We're a decision-making, policymaking body and table here. And just wondering how can we, if we're dealing with issues that we know we want to get this lens and get your expert opinion on, how do we, how do we do that?
You can do that through us. We're, we're happy to, we've, we've actually used the Student Advisory Council for feedback on different issues over the last year. You know, originally, this was, in the wake of George Floyd's death, this was set up as an anti-racism Student Advisory Council. And we've broadened from that. We haven't lost the initial mission, but we've broadened our, our reflections and our feedback and our input from, from that. So we, we offer you the opportunity to avail yourself of their wisdom through us. And we don't, we don't have an issue with that at, at all. The guidance document that they are working on has been a journey. It's been an odyssey. It continues to be an odyssey, but we believe that it's going to, it's going to land and that it's going to be a contribution to students and educators across the state who, students are well aware of what they're experiencing, but adults aren't necessarily aware of what it is to walk a mile in kids' shoes, particularly, particular children's shoes in particular environments. And each of you have spoken your, your truths about your realities, but you know, the 1.4 million public school children experiencing different things in different schools, some of which our educators know about and others of which they, they don't. Please.
No, I was just going to say, again, it's good to know that, that we have access to run some of the decisions or questions that we have and that we have you all to, to depend on to, to do that. So again, I thank you as well as the department for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Student Advisory Council. We appreciate you. Have a great day. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on personal finance standards. This presentation will feature information on the proposed standards for personal finance. To implement the new personal finance half-course credit graduation requirement, the department recommends that the current social studies content expectations for personal finance be republished as standalone personal finance content expectations. This presentation is information only with a subsequent public comment period and ultimately board approval of the resultant final recommendation. We welcome our presenters. Dr. Elsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, the Division of Educators, Students, and School Supports.
Thank you.
Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of Office of Educational Support. Dr. Corinne E. Edwards, AKA CE2 or CE Squares. And Mr. Scott Koenig, Social Studies Consultant in the Office of Educational Support. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, board. Dr. Rice, you did an awesome job of teeing that up for us. It's going to go well. I won't belabor the point. I have with me today Dr. Corinne Edwards, the Director of the Office of Educational Support. We're very happy to have Scott Koenig, our Social Studies Consultant, who will be presenting as well on the proposed standards for personal finance as required by recent law that was passed. And we will discuss the law, provide an overview, along with our next steps in regard to the standards. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Edwards, who will provide us an overview and take us through the remaining portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Good morning. We're here to provide information on the proposed standards for personal finance and to share next steps, including public comment and approval for full adoption. Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan Guiding Principle Number Four states, quote, "All students are provided every opportunity to achieve the broadest range of life dreams." Our work with the personal finance standards will support the effort to ensure that all Michigan students will have the requisite knowledge and skills to be critical thinkers in this area to further inform and guide their life choices. The department recommends that the current social studies content expectations for personal finance be republished as standalone personal finance content expectations for approval by the State Board of Education. Our presentation today will provide an overview of the personal finance standards and the development timeline, a review of the committee and its related tasks, and share results and recommendations as it relates to next steps in the request for approval of the proposed personal finance standards. I will now turn it over to Mr. Scott Koenig, our Social Studies Consultant, to walk us through this information. Scott?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good morning. In 2019, the Michigan State Board of Education approved the K-12 social studies standards. The social studies standards were organized into categories within each of the social studies content areas, with content expectations providing more specificity in each standard. Personal finance content expectations were organized under the standard category of personal finance within the economics content area. In 2022, a new law required that a half-credit course in personal finance be added as requirement for a diploma under the Michigan Merit Curriculum, and that the department developed personal finance subject area content expectations specific to personal finance. To advance the implementation of the personal finance requirement, the department is recommending the use of the social studies personal finance content expectations approved in 2019, but republish them separately as personal finance content expectations for approval by the State Board of Education. This slide is an outline of the six content expectations we are proposing for personal finance. We have provided a hard copy of the proposed personal finance content expectation, which provides more details on each of the content expectations. Note that each content expectation is focused on a key concept in financial literacy: earning income, buying goods and services, saving using credit, financial investing, and protecting and insuring. As part of the process for the approval of the current social studies personal finance standards as the personal finance standalone standards, the MDE conducted an external review by experts in personal finance and personal finance education. Higher education input was provided by representatives from Grand Valley State University. Internal input was also solicited from the Offices of Education Excellence, Assessment and Accountability, and Career and Technical Education. We were intentional in this selection to include a diverse group of representatives. And by the term diverse, I'm talking geographically, but based on expertise. We're also looking at industries, so we had multiple industries involved who are involved around the personal finance space, as well as economics and personal finance organizations in the education community. Representatives also included some who helped to write the social studies finance standards. The committee was tasked with reviewing the current content expectations and providing feedback specifically about the proposal to republish them as personal finance content expectations outside of the social studies domain. So the results of the committee review is as follows. The law requiring a half-credit course in personal finance has boosted the importance of financial literacy education for students. The committee affirmed that these proposed standards were accepted in 2019 and have served as core foundational space from which educators have developed student learning opportunities. They also praised the legislation for amplifying the need for personal finance education for students. However, standards are just words on paper until actualized in curriculum and meaningful educational experiences for students. Therefore, the committee expressed a need for standards implementation support that includes professional learning around content and instruction, as well as curriculum, curricular models, and other resources. Based on feedback from the Committee of Experts convened by the MDE, the proposed standards are foundationally strong and should be approved as standalone personal finance standards. However, they should be intentionally wrapped around with professional learning and curricular resources to ensure all students have the opportunity for rigorous, meaningful, personal finance learning expectations. On the front, you can see that our next steps. So as presented, our next steps include public comment in April through May. We'll file the presentation to this board in June. So once approved, the implementation will be planned for the 2023, 2024 school year with the release of standards to be held in July, early July, ideally July 1st. And this would be accompanied with a guidance document to assist local schools and districts with this implementation. Short and sweet, so right to the point today. Thank you for listening. Questions for our team?
Short and sweet may be the theme for the day. Thank you very much, presenters. Board members, questions for our presenters? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you. I appreciate that. The, the question I have is, I just want to make sure that I understand sort of the, the gist of the, the idea. So if you go to slide four on page two, I want to just make sure I understand. So the proposed personal finance content expectations. So you're saying that, just this slide right here, you're saying that those were already in place, embedded within the social study standards? Okay. And now that the legislature has passed the half-credit, you're saying that these particular, these, these six content expectations, and just as a term of art, does that mean that those had to be taught within social studies? Or was that something, I'm talking about before, before the legislation was passed?
Sure.
Or was this something that could be taught? And if it were as part of social studies, these six buckets needed to be hit?
Right.
Okay, but people were, but, but it was dependent upon the curriculum of the individual school district? In other words, it didn't, we, we can't be assured that every student was learning these. Is that right?
Because they are content expectations and standards, it is the expectation of the SAA that they are taught. With local autonomy, school districts can develop that within their curriculum at the local level, but the standard is expected to be taught.
Okay. Okay. But the, the, but the, the, the recommendation is to pull it out into a separate standard so that there will be additional support in order to teach it? I guess what I'm trying to understand is if, if it was already being taught, and the legislature is now saying it has to be taught, what exactly is being solved with what we're doing?
Welcome to our, our team's challenge in the review of the law. It is these exact questions that we were asking ourselves. These expectations were housed before 2019 from our expectations before that. They continued in fewer, clearer, higher, as it was developed and accepted for 2019 as the direction. Foundationally, these spaces align well within the personal finance space. And so, yes, the, it was recommended that these expectations, strongly recommended that these expectations were being done through the economics curriculum. However, many districts throughout the state already had included a personal finance learning space. But by pulling them separately and presenting them in a more defined fashion, it, it matches what the law is recommending for school districts to do. So in a, in a sense, it allows an educator's mind or a school's mind to say, here is the, the specific space that we need to follow in order to build our curriculum and learning spaces for our students.
Let me ask you this. Because it's now being a part of the MME as a half-credit in personal finance, is the expectation that there will be a separate class offered devoted to this? I mean, and I'm just sort of thinking about, in other words, if you, let's say, you're taking, I think, what is it, two years of social studies right now under MME? Or is it three years?
It'd be three. So they, yes, yes.
So is, I mean, I don't know, I'm not trying, I mean, I'm just, I'm just sort of thinking what the legislature might be thinking, that, that this will be pulled out and so now a separate class will be taught? And then my question would be, if that's the case, because students' schedules are very, very packed and, you know, very, very crammed in some respects, what might not be taught or what might be taken away if you know because of this?
Yeah, so that's what I think why we're, really why we're proposing to kind of stay within this, this framework, because they're foundationally really strong and have this open allowance. And within the, the MMC, there's a lot of flexibility of how locals can design their, their specific learning spaces for their students. So, and that, that means that schools may select the option of providing a direct course, right? So that would earn a half-credit based on what the school district deems appropriate, and/or school and/or district. They might take this, these expectations and integrate them into other courses. So they might put it into a math course or put it into an, an English course. So along the lines that they could do with any other of the disciplines and integrated work within their schools. As long as students really are showing proficiency in our proposed, or in these six expectations according to the school district, then those students can earn their credit. The other space that the law connects to is the, of course, career tech education. So that's also another route that these expectations could be integrated into. So that gives school districts a lot of flexibility of how they might implement this, aside from just making it a course.
Okay, so I just, one last question. So I just want to make sure I understand. So you could envision that, let's say, for example, English, there's a requirement of four years of ELA. If these standards are encapsulated within, let's say, an English class... If these standards are encapsulated within, let's say, an English class, you're saying that, and I just wasn't aware of this, that a student could earn, at the same time, a half a credit of English, as well as a half a credit of personal finance, in one class?
That's my understanding. As long as they show proficiency within, and mastery within these content expectations.
Which would be in the form of some sort of a test?
Yep, and that, that's the challenge, because we have the local control space. How the local deems what mastery is within these spaces. Yep, so that, that's that local control space within our Michigan. Yeah, great questions, though.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. McMillan, and then Dr. Robinson, and then Dr. Pritchett.
I appreciate Vice President Lipton's line of questions, because I have similar questions. I just want to make sure I understand the context. So, is this similar to all the other standards that come before us? I guess this is to the chairman, when they come before us and then they go out? Is this, is that where we're at, is they're coming before us? I always wonder what this is, because they, when it comes back, they always say, well, you had your shot at it then, but then, when we, when we're here, we don't actually vote on anything. So, I don't really, I, you know, I guess if we, if you got a lot of negative feedback, I guess you'd go back to the table and say, maybe we need to fix these up before sending them out. So, that's where, I guess that's where we're at, is kind of pre-going out to public comment.
That's correct. So, so, so just, just from a, from a process perspective, we present to you, let's back up. So, we, we assemble a group of people, they make determinations about what those standards should be over a several-month period of time, or in some cases, a several-year period of time. We come forward with those draft standards to you, present to you, go out for public comment, assess the public comment, do what we do with the public comment, and then return to you for a vote.
Right. And then who were the, usually we see in this document all the members of the committee. Where, where are the list of the members of the committee that had input on this?
Yeah, I have them. I could get that to you.
Although, were there any? Because you just pulled this out of an existing document, or existing standards. Is that right or not? I mean, I thought I heard that these were already social study standards, which, not exactly sure how this fits into social studies, but they were already in there. So, did you really need a committee to, to copy onto another piece of paper?
Yeah. There was still, there was still some, even though in looking at the standards and assessing what the legislation was saying, there was still a need to convene a committee to really look at the relevance of those standards and the alignment of those standards to what the legislation was asking, and to have some vetting in that process.
Okay. And then I, they're, they're pretty skinny as far as the standards go, which I'm actually happy. I mean, there's not, I feel the granularity of standards means there's less local control. I mean, you're supposed to go through all these, this gives a little more freedom. But getting back to kind of the line of questioning from Mrs. Lipton, what if they don't, she didn't get into this, but what if they don't cover these? You know, is there like a, you know, does a kid not get to graduate if, if a few of these items are not hit? I mean, personally, it seems to me you could do this in about an hour, as far as some of these standards. Now, supposedly, it's a half-credit.
Yes.
I'm hearing, you know, I, I'm kind of guessing there's not a MDE police that are going to go through, or maybe there is. I mean, if, could somebody complain and all of a sudden?
So, the answer is there is not. Okay.
Well, I mean, but, so do they really need to do these?
I would assume that that would be, that that would be a, a good thing, given your support of local control.
Exactly, no, I agree. So, they, yeah, so I want to see, I want, I guess I want to know what, what is the amount of freedom that locals have in this?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. So, they could say, we covered this, and?
And that's the, that's the end of it. That's the end of it with respect to that particular course. These are the proposed standards. If these are accepted, then this is the what, 832 local school districts across the state will operate under?
Okay.
Without police.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just meant somebody that's checking.
No, understood. No, but, but, I mean, it's, it's metaphorical, but, but the point is nonetheless the same.
Right.
There, there is no, there is no strict oversight on the part of the, the State Board of Education, or the State Department of Education. There is not the requisite staff to do that. There's not the requisite interest in doing that.
Okay. I guess one of the standards I was curious about, as far as PF2 buying goods and services, describe the factors that consumers may consider when purchasing a good or service, including the cost benefits, and the role of government in obtaining the information. What does that last part, what does that mean as a standard? They, they need, the kids need to understand the role of government in, in obtaining the information for buying goods and services? What does that mean?
I, I think really this, this expectation is connecting to how economic systems can work within government foundations and/or vice versa, in the inter, interdependency on the two.
I have no idea how that has anything to do with what?
Buying goods and services.
Should government be understanding what we buy and sell?
Well, that's, that sounds like a really good question for debate in the classroom. I, I think, it sounds like a overarching question.
That a kind of a communist oversight would be something that we would want to at least allow, that the government should know everything. Kind of like the CBDC, Central Bank Digital Currency Proposition, that nobody will be able to buy or sell unless the government says you can. Is that, so that, that's what we're kind of advocating in these?
Well, I don't know if that's quite the case, but I, I think the foundational space of buying goods and services allows flexibility for thought and processing, for development of the local to, to work through that, that, for their community and the community's needs.
Okay. And then, yeah, I would like to get a, a list of the members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Robinson, Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Snyder.
So, I, I'm trying to figure out kind of the etymology almost of this. These standards at one time resided in the social study standards?
They resided within the, yes, and within the economics discipline.
And then they were pulled out to be more freestanding?
We're, yeah, we're recommending that they be pulled out as a freestand.
Hold on one second. Let, let me clarify. They, they would, they would be freestanding and still a part of the social study standards. The social studies?
But linked.
Correct.
Connected.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So, not a completely different certification area, not a completely different set of national standards, et cetera, but kind of pulled over to the side and highlighted. Okay. So, what is the status of social studies, because that's where these come from, teacher preparation programs in teaching this content? Do we know that every student that comes out of MSU, University of Michigan, Grand Valley, et cetera, with a social studies certificate can also teach personal finance? Are we, are we creating a new kind of infrastructure of required courses without the requisite population and pipeline of teachers ready to teach it?
That's an excellent question, Dr. Robinson. We actually will be coming before the board with the teacher preparation standards for social studies. So, our staff out of OEE have been working alongside this team, so they are making sure that, in terms of an educator, or one pursuing that, this has been a part of the conversation so that we're not introducing in the state of Michigan content requirements for the student that the educator has not been prepared for. And that was, yes, something of thought that we had to pull together quickly to say, we need to make sure that we are preparing our educators, meaning we needed to collaborate with our EPPs and our EPIs as this legislation became law.
Okay. And my other question is, I see personal finance as, I hate Venn diagrams, but I do think there's kind of a Venn diagram here that overlaps between social studies slash economics and mathematics, right? That we're trying to apply mathematical principles into making decisions about your personal finance and economics. So, I understand that, that kind of overlap. And I understand, I guess, how it could satisfy a half-credit out of math then. It doesn't seem to satisfy half-credit out of social studies, which, if it's coming out of social studies, I would think first, you would want to take that half-credit out of the discipline from which it comes. And then my other question is, why foreign language or arts? I mean, arts came, I'm a music person, right? So, arts came last to the party. We were one of the last to get a half-credit or a credit, and now it seems like we're going to take a, a half-credit of arts or foreign language out of a requirement that overlaps social studies and math, but not out of social studies? I don't understand that, and it feels unfair to me. It feels like we're going to force students to make choices between studying an art form and this personal finance class, when they've, there are, how many years of math are required? Four?
Four.
How many years of social studies?
Three.
And how many credits of music or art or foreign language? Okay, so I'll just leave that hanging like a big, you know, wet enchilada on the floor, but I, I don't under, I don't understand the way that that's being linked. I suspect Dr. Rice is going to educate me here.
Sure. It's, it's a function of state statute passed by our state legislature. There's your social studies lesson. And the, the, the problem is, is that we, we've had noneducators working on educator requirements in the state for, for many years. And sometimes they get it right, and sometimes they don't. And you, you've pointed out examples where, where we've struggled in the, in the state with our requirements. I mean, MMC is a lot to unpack. It deserves to be unpacked, deserves to be unpacked fully, and, and not in miniature. And I welcome that opportunity with the, with the board. But ultimately, these are state statutory requirements.
And I apologize, I'm not trying to attack, I mean, you, you're the messengers. You had to come to the table this morning. I'm not trying to attack you. I just, I, I don't understand, from the minute I saw this past, I thought, why are we robbing this pocket to put, it just, I, I need to understand that better.
Well, and as a, as a, a former world language teacher, I feel particularly strongly about it, as you do, as a former music teacher. Yeah. We're, we're to, thank you, Dr. Robinson. We're to Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Snyder, and then Ms. Lipton, and then Mr. Bullock. Okay.
If I can hold that thought long enough.
I'll talk fast.
Okay.
My colleagues have done a good job of setting this up for me. Just so I can clarify in my mind, this is now required of the class of 2028?
Correct.
Current seventh graders, I believe.
It'd be current seventh grade, yeah, entering eighth grade, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And in a large high school, because I used to be a high school principal and had to schedule, in a large high school, having the personal finance fall into the econ class, where I've probably got several sections, makes sense. The schools and, and the districts I'm concerned about, as far as trying to meet this requirement for their students, are the smaller high schools, where you just don't have the staffing available. Hence, I can see the rationale for possibly having it fall into a math class or something like that, depending on how many social studies sections you've got available at this point. And to Dr. Rice's point, and I've had this discussion with him, MMC was passed in 2016. It continues to get added to, subtracted to, et cetera. It's time we took a step back, my opinion, and looked at it in its totality, and began to have some educators and some serious discussion about it. Because I'm not negating whether students need to understand personal finance at all. I'm not throwing that under the bus. What I'm saying is, we can't continue to do, oh, let's do this, let's do that, let's put it in here, let's put it in there. I was a social studies teacher. I'm not sure you want me teaching your child personal finance, maybe my husband, but not me. So, anyways, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the humility as, as well. Ms. Snyder?
I have a couple of questions, but I am going to piggyback on to what this board is saying about how this should not at all be confused with social study standards. I, I don't think you should come before us again and ask us to re-review the social study standards, or bake this into social study standards prep for teachers in higher education. From a department that has been very direct about the importance of teaching comprehensive history, you don't confuse that with a half a credit of personal finance, especially when it, it definitely aligns more so with economics and math. So, I think there's a resounding, don't go there, bad decision. So, please consider that. Do we have any credits in our MMC as we unpack them that don't have specific curriculum attached to them, or have service providers that local districts choose from? Is there anything that we truly, you know, don't recommend that districts purchase a curriculum?
Hold on a second. I, I want clarification about what that question means, because I don't understand it.
So, of all of our MMC requirements, we have these, we have the MMC, we have requirements, we now have a half a credit to personal finance, we have other credits for social studies, math, science, English. Do we, of any of those credits, do any districts just make up their own curriculum? Or do they typically purchase a curriculum related to those credits?
They, they do both.
Okay. Okay. And then, I think that's it for now, but I might circle back around for a second bite.
Okay. And to be clear, that when, when we are required by statute to put forward standards, we do. And we're required to put forward standards in this particular case. And the connection to social study standards is, these are already embedded in the social study standards. Where they are, what they are more akin to, you could, you could debate, but since they were already embedded in the social study standards, we wanted to make clear that we had pulled them from the previously vetted social study standard for your consideration here. There must be standards associated with this course approved. We wanted you to know their provenance.
Sure. But I'm, I'm going to push back on that, because, again, this board has, has valued comprehensive history. This department has valued the teaching of comprehensive history. It's awkward that we would consider personal finance from a functional standpoint of being taught to students, that that would be the coursework unto which we would use that vessel to teach it. And, you know, Tom mentioned something about it, yes, there's no MDE police on this, but, you know, there is one accountable factor in public education, and that's parents. When you send your kid to school, you do want to make sure that, in fact, your local school district has adopted some kind of curriculum. We've got parents in the state of Michigan that are having a hard time getting a hold of certain curriculums, right? It's, it's not even handed over. So, whether you purchase it or you design it, a parent should be able to go to their local school district and FOIA it, and see that these things are being taught in a direct and explicit way. And not in a hours-long worth of course, coursework, right? I mean, then a student could be, you know, absent that day and not learn about basic things like savings accounts, and good financial decision-making, and financial investing, and what it looks like to take out student loans or use credit. I mean, these are, I think the half a credit that we baked into MMC is a very good decision. So, don't take it from social studies, where we want to teach comprehensive history. Maybe reconsider if it was already baked into it, do something different. It should not. If we really want to do this effectively, and parents are our ultimate accountability to this, do it and be prepared to provide them with the proof that, hey, we're doing it. This is your student's opportunity to become educated on personal finance and good, healthy financial decision-making.
Okay. Thank you very much. We, we, we've got an order. Happy, happy to put you in the, in the queue, Ms. Tilly. Not, not a problem. Ms. Lipton, Mr. Bullock for the comment that he is remembering steadfastly, and then Ms. Tilly.
Since I already asked, I'm going for a second. I'm going to yield to?
Very good. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Tilly, and Ms., Ms., Ms. Lipton for the second bite.
I'll, I'll try to, so, Dr. Rice also made a comment, noneducators are often making statute. And so, as a former legislator, I know a lot of times, folks would come with some proposed legislation about some industry, whether it was law enforcement or education, and I'd go, have you talked to the educators yet? And they go, no, but this is what they, you know, or you find a person who dabbled in teaching, trying to write something for the whole state, but, I got to address on that. But for me, maybe, this is me, I guess I'm learning here, as I learn about the curriculum history. In my social studies days, government and econ, the basis of economics and currency and exchange of goods and services and finance, were a part of my social studies. were a part of my social studies curriculum. So I don't know necessarily about the pushback that social studies is totally history, right? So I'm just trying to learn and gain some knowledge here as I hear this conversation at the table about this standard here. You, you said, you know, government econ weren't part of the curriculum at one point. I don't know if it's separated or I missed something.
No, it's still, still part of the curriculum.
So I can see how personal finance and learning about currency and exchange could still be in the social studies, the social science of economics, right? So I, I'm just, I don't have any push-pull. I'm just trying to get, get some clarity in my own-
You're just trying to understand, right?
Yes.
So, so economics generally would be part of a broad social studies background in, um, in, in high school. As you, as your economics course becomes less micro, less macro, and, and more mini, that is to say, more personal finance, it be, it, it starts creeping into mathematics. So you have, at the local school district level, this course has been taught by math teachers. It's been taught by social studies teachers. It's probably been taught by some, uh, former French teachers and some business teachers. So a lot of people have had their oars in the water when it comes to, um, to this course. And it really would turn on the, um, the focus of the course, that some would lean more heavily into the personal side of it and some more the, the economics side of it. That, that is to say, the, 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 the national economics or international economics, a micro, a macro. In this particular case, um, I think the focus was on a household's finance. And, um, in that perspective, it could be taught legitimately, I think, by someone from a, from a math perspective or from a social studies perspective or from both.
It's cross pollination.
It's cross pollination, yep. And this is, this is definitely the season for bees.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Bullock. Uh, Ms. Tilly, to you.
I was basically going in the same direction. I could definitely see, like, buying goods and services or financial investing could be a part of macroeconomics. But this is personal finance, so you wouldn't put it under micro or macroeconomics necessarily. And then, um, social studies, I pulled up the definition because for me, it was the same thing. It wasn't just history. And it is multiple disciplines. So you do have your history, government, economic, civic, social, I mean, sorry, sociology, geography, and anthropology. So it's made up of multiple disciplines.
And sometimes psychology.
Yep, psychology, linguistics.
Yeah, absolutely.
Archaeology, yeah.
All sorts of ologies.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right, very good, thank you so much.
And, and I do want to say that this is so important. And some households, students, um, get taught about personal finances. And a lot of households, they don't get taught about personal finances. So I think that, um, having this back-integrated into our, our school systems is very important for a lot of our students.
I agree. When, when kids used to come back from college and talk with us as alums with the high school students, and, and they'd go and we'd ask them to speak to the high school students about their college experiences as part of creating a college-going culture. We would have lunch with them and they'd say to us, you know, why did we have to learn A, B, and C and not D, E, and F? And D, E, and F always included personal finance. You know, I started a bank account, they gave me checks, I thought I could just write them. You thought you could write them without, without money. Well, that's, that's frightening, but that's the absence of a personal finance course.
And a lot of times, they feel like they're learning things that won't affect them on, on a day-to-day basis. Things that they feel like are useless or they, they, um, really can't relate to. But this makes it more relatable for them. And a lot of times, you know, with finances, young people don't really comprehend it because they don't have that experience yet. So this makes it more real for them. They can see how things equate and, and how they can, they need to manage their finances when they, um, when they start earning income, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lipton?
I just wanted to clarify something that you said. So my understanding was when the legislature passed it, it was passed, more as a recognition that, um, this was a gap in knowledge in our students. I, I was not aware that, that, that the legislation, um, prescribed that it be within a particular curriculum, like social studies, for example. I thought it was more a response to incorporating it. I, I, as I recall, the debate was sort of over. We're, you know, maybe kids aren't really needing Algebra II, which again is, I'm not getting into that debate, but I remember the talk was, and why are we not teaching kids personal finance? So I, I thought the legislative debate was more in the direction of mathematics. I, I, and I'm not aware of the legislation saying that it needs to be in social studies. I think it just had half a credit of personal finance.
I don't, that's exactly right.
Okay, so, 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 so you're just pointing out that it was already in social studies?
Well, it was, it was in social studies. We have a requirement to put forward standards. The standards already exist, they've already been vetted, they've already been approved. We're re-raising them and recommending that they be standalone, uh, standards for personal finance. That we're required to have personal finance standards. We're saying these previously vetted, previously sent out for public comment, previously approved by the state board standards as part of the social studies standard should be standalone standards for personal finance. That's our recommendation.
And the local school district can have the flexibility to decide if they want to incorporate it into a math. Because we actually heard from one of the teachers of the year that-
They, they have quite a bit of flexibility what to do once the standards are put in. Because, remember, the standards are broader and, and then your curriculum narrower, your instruction in the classroom narrower still. Okay, Dr. Pugh, to you.
Going back to the conversation around, uh, who will teach this? We were, we had a presentation on the educator standards that are being revised right now. So was this already thought of, um, that they, okay, so we were already thinking about this?
Just to answer that first one, there was actually representation who were part, part of the K-12 standards on that group as well. So there was overlap and intersection in that thinking. So what was proposed to you is, is looking at the future of social studies education and supporting mechanisms for learning spaces for future teachers.
Okay, so it wasn't an afterthought, we're not having to catch up, we're already?
No, and, and I think, you know, the conversation around, uh, social studies education prep, of course, it depends on the field of study that, that educator goes in or where they're deciding their majors in that, that realm. But, you know, most social studies educators are getting into spaces where they're learning at least some economic studies. Personal finance is often mixed into that, whether that's macro, micro, and intertwined in that. But that, that was a big discussion with the group that presented to you earlier about the post-secondary institution and then prep standards. So, uh, this is definitely not, uh, it has been thought of at this point.
And then, because now this is standalone, and maybe you answered this in that question that I just asked or, or in the response you just gave me, but how are we making sure that other educators are, are getting, uh, these materials added to their, their curriculum?
Yeah, that's a, a really good question. I, the best I can answer that is that there's definitely a want for supporting mechanisms in, in curriculum development and that kind of space. So we would work really closely with our partners throughout the state, MCE, as well as regional ISD consultants to, to develop ideas and, and support. And of course, our guidance document can help assist that process too. So we would be a partner in that effort to assist locals in their curriculum development and efforts in, in, so that students can leave their school being financially proficient.
And then just going back to the questions around this April 2023 public comment. And if you could just talk a little bit more about what that looks like. You have this advisory group that you'll get us some information on. But just making sure, I mean, there, there, there's diversity like none other when we're having, uh, these conversations around finance and, and our students' knowledge, but, uh, we could say so much about, about, um, about that, right? You know, as far as what, what, uh, different communities have access to and, um, the realities that, that are faced, uh, by many when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I mean, this, this obviously is, is, is a prime space that, that we would want to have that lens, so.
As a part of the public, right, as a part of the public comment, we do strive to make sure that all eyes, um, and we have that equitable response from those to give that opportunity, to give that input, to your point.
We'll be intentional in, in getting it communicated to experts in the field to have a good look at it in public comment, to give us feedback from multiple perspectives.
I mean, and I know that it's difficult. We've seen that no matter what we're talking about, gathering input for the very reasons that we're talking about many times is that, um, different groups are, um, spread thin in working on, um, urgent issues. And so just making sure that, that, uh, again, as we would say for, for anything that we're trying to get input on, uh, that, that it's as diverse as possible. But I know you're thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Presenters, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Please.
So I just looked through the legislation that was passed, which, uh, Mr. Bullock voted for on May 26, 2022.
Yes.
And I see nothing, and then I also looked at the sections that it refers to. Nothing about that, uh, the stat, the standard should have anything about the role of government in obtaining the information that citizens purchase goods and services. So I don't know why that's in there. I, uh, I don't, you know, I'd like to know why that's in there. I understand that the role could be nothing, but you could include, you could decide to include 50,000 other things. But for some reason, this got included as to what the role of government is in understanding citizens' buying habits. I still, I, it's coming before us. I would prefer that it not go out for public comment until that's removed. That's just my personal preference. I was part of a majority, I would say that it shouldn't and, but at any rate, that, I just felt like that's important for me to at least, uh, mention.
So we can, we can certainly review, um, the social studies standard setting that was, that was approved four years ago by this board. Okay, by this board, four years ago, um, June of 2019. And we can see if there's anything in that process that helps us understand that particular standard. We'll put it out for public comment, we'll get the comments that we get. We'll assess those public comments and we'll bring back to you, um, a recommendation, either the same or altered for, um, for these, uh, for these standards. But in the meantime, presenters, if, if we could do a little bit of research back to that period of time from, uh, 2000, and I'm looking at Ruth Ann Hodges, from, from, uh, depending upon how you count, um, from, uh, 2018, 19, or from 2014 to 2019. But one way or the other, if we can, um, uh, get a little bit of insight into the standard to which, uh, Mr. McMillan refers, I think that that would be, um, would be instructive. Presenters, thank you very much. It's 10:58. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Goal number one, expansion of early childhood learning opportunities. During this presentation, we will feature goal one. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, and Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And thank you to, uh, the board for allowing Richard and I to, uh, provide some information today related to goal one of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, which is expand early, uh, early childhood learning opportunities, um, for our youngest learners. So increasingly, for many of our youngsters, school begins at four. Um, and Richard is here today to share some metrics around our publicly funded preschool program for four-year-olds in the state of Michigan, which is our GSRP program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Richard.
Thank you once again for an opportunity to be before you and talk about early childhood. As a reminder of our goal one metrics, we have the number of percent of children in GSRP, our Great Start Rating Program, our, uh, program for four-year-old children at risk of educational failure as it's defined formally, but based on economic factors as well as a variety of other eligibility, uh, factors as adopted by the state board periodically. Number of eligible children for GSRP, as well as the third metric being our situational ranking against other states' early childhood, um, preschool programs based on the Rutgers National Institute for Early Education Research Yearbook that's put out year to year, and I'll cover that in just a minute. Wanted to start out though by just giving you an update on our overall funding and where we are. You'll see the dotted line as we go from 2023 to 2024. So for how we ended up this year for fiscal year '23, we ended with a $452 million, uh, allocation, which is a wonderful place to be. And where the governor has put in her executive budget proposal, moving us into 2024 at the moment, as the legislature considers it, is $542.6 million. And, uh, that proposal is, as we are going to see in just a minute, to be able to add more additional slots as the dotted line continues to go up for 2024. Currently, we're at, uh, the amount of money that we're currently at is 96,201 slot equivalent. And the proposed funding of the $542 million will allow for 106,291 slots. So going from 96,201 to 106,291 is, um, quite an increase overall in the governor's executive budget. What does that equate to in terms of eligible children taking it down to what it truly matters, which are the children? What is wonderful in what we see, last time I was here, we were talking about the fact that we were at 37,140 children served with GSRP pre-pandemic. We, we definitely had an effect of the pandemic on hitting our numbers across early childhood, kindergarten, enrollment, et cetera. You saw the decrease, we were digging out of it, digging out. But the intermediate school districts, our local partners, being the LEAs, PSAs, and our community-based partners did a yeoman's job over the last year and a half. And we have dug out of the hole. We, in fiscal year '22, 35,895. This year, fiscal year '23, we are out of the hole. The official numbers came in at 38,140. So something to be proud of. You know, it was a difficult pandemic to dig out of for enrollment. They have done it, and we are now looking toward the future. And, uh, we're looking at 2024. We have potential with the amount of funding to be able, based on our part-day Head Start GSRP blend slots and our full-day GSRP slots, slots, and the percentage use basically that we're doing now, we're looking at 56,769 children. doing now, we're looking at 56,769 children. Potentially, that could be served next year, if capacity allows for it. I want to put that clause in there, because of course, capacity matters. We have several, which I'm going to go into in a few minutes, factors that come into capacity. Funding is one of those factors. Per people funding has increased over time under the governor, and that is wonderful, the last couple of years in particular. The governor continues, and legislature, to propose increases. This particular increase, in terms of per people funding, current funding is at $9,150. The proposal's going up, just like K-12 parity, 5% to $9,608. When we think about, I want to stop for a moment here. When we think about the factors I was speaking about in terms of going into adding more slots for children, we are thinking about capacity. And that really matters here for access, funding levels, where we rank nationally. And so, this is the third metric, if you remember, on the goal one metrics, the National Near, National Institute for Early Education Research Yearbook. The 2022 data, which is the program year, 2122 data, is going to be released very soon. It matters based on the calendar agenda of Secretary Cardona. So, it'll be released very soon, but I do anticipate that we will be 10 out of 10 again. We'll be ranked number one. But how many people, how many other states we're going to be tied with? Not sure yet. But given our funding increases in '23, given our numbers increases, I believe we should be continuing to move in a positive direction. So, next time we come around, we'll be seeing some new numbers to show with you. So, next area of update, spring fiscal year '23, where we are right now, supplemental budget season, while talking about the fiscal year '24 budget as well. We are in the process of kindergarten enrollment. We are in the process of preschool enrollment right now, February, March, April. Due to slower-than-expected enrollments in fiscal year '22, pandemic transitioning, and fiscal year '23, GSRP had $135 or has a $135 million reserve to spend. This is because federal money in particular has been allocated and was not used to serve children. And what is the whole purpose of GSRP and all the federal money given was to increase GSRP enrollment. Well, one of those capacity issues that I was bringing up earlier was the program model options. And so, a proposal to be able to serve more children is to expand GSRP's program options, expand hours, days, and weeks. And Dr. Rice, and my staff, and myself, we have been drumbeating to incentivize ISDs to use some of this money to add, go for four to five days a week, add more weeks to the school, to the program year, rather than 30, which is the minimum in statute that GSRP must deliver, go to 36 to 38. Start to match what is closer to the K-12 school year. And also, because GSRP isn't a, from my parents' point of view, GSRP for four days does not match what childcare provides, five days a week minimally in most cases. So, if we go to five days a week, now, we're in a better positioning between childcare and also development and kindergarten. We have a niche for our high-quality program. Proposal two, another area that is one of those capacity areas that I wanted to speak to, related to increasing enrollment, is providing transportation. That is a huge barrier to families at risk. They can't access GSRP if they can't have their children get to the program. So, another area that is spoken to for the supplemental that we want to drumbeat is around adding and using some of this money for transportation. Now, this can be used for one-time transportation funds, to add additional infrastructure, to remove barriers, to buy buses, update buses, update transportation systems. There's a whole variety of uses that we could do, but ultimately, the bottom line is to be able to increase access to GSRP through increasing transportation to our young kids. Now, what is exciting is that beyond the supplemental budget, the governor, in her executive budget for fiscal year '24, has included an $18 million ongoing increase to the transportation set aside. So, right now, $10 million is in the budget as a set aside for GSRP transportation. But $10 million for what I said earlier, which was $452 million, that's kind of a drop in the bucket. Going up to $542 million, we're going to go up to $28 million set aside. Now, of course, programs, ISDs, they can use portions of their regular budget for transportation as well. But this is a special set aside that can exclude, is only exclusively for transportation. So, it's nice to go from 10 to 28 million. The final proposal in the supplemental that is, again, considered this spring, right now, as we speak, is workforce. This is a huge issue, just like in K-12, we have workforce shortage in early childhood. GSRP, this is an issue. Lead teachers, assistant teachers, aides. The supplemental addresses that. It outlines a variety of areas of flexibility to be able to fund and incentivize and recruit, as well as retain, staff in particular. We promote the fact that we need to enroll, and staff in particular incentivize education to be able to have individuals come into the field who are promoting individuals of color in multilingual communities that may not otherwise, you know, consider our field as a career, so that we have staff who match the population we serve, community by community by community. It is important to us. It is important to the families and the children. As you can see, also, financial support to assist in terms of achieving GSRP qualifications for the lead, assistant, classroom aides, as well as the fact that we do have classroom coaches in GSRP, one of the few states that actually have a requirement to have master's level, five years minimum experience, teacher, teaching team coaches that go into each classroom on a minimally monthly basis to coach the teachers in their curriculum instruction and their ongoing authentic child assessment, behavior modification, et cetera. So, I'm going to end this three-part presentation on the fact that you may have heard recently that, from the governor, that she has a proposal now in terms of our goalpost from going to expansion of GSRP to, by 2027, getting to universally accessible pre-K. So, Governor Whitmer, universally accessible preschool proposal on the table. Governor set a big goal to ensure that all four-year-olds have access to pre-K by the end of her second term. In her State of the State, she announced this. She continues to discuss it in a variety of forums over the next four years. This executive budget, a few of the items I mentioned today, is one of the first, she views as the first step, according to her education advisor, as a four-step process to get to that goal. As mentioned, very proud, they view this as an expansion of GSRP, a continuation of GSRP expansion toward that ultimate goal of universally access to pre-K. And the other piece of this talking point that is provided by the governor's education advisor is the fact that the governor's fiscal year '24 budget does include additional investments for children birthed at age five beyond just focusing on universal pre-K. There is $31 million for a Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies initiative and program. Another $1 million for early on, totaling now a $22.3 million investment, if that $1 million is approved. And early on is our Part C of IDEA, so Special Education Services for infants and toddlers. A $7.7 million proposal for our Great Start Collaboratives, now totaling, if it gets past, $18.4 million. And that is for our Zero to Five Early Childhood Systems Building Efforts across the state. $1.2 million proposal for early literacy hubs, and this is for pre-K to grade two, on average, early literacy initiatives focused on early childhood, early elementary, as well as efforts for parent literacy as well. And then, $4 million for Dolly Parton Imagination Library efforts around the state. So, that falls under that third block right there. And so, ultimately, what does all this information tell us? Again, increasingly, school begins at four within the big picture, is no longer just a K-12 system of education. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it, and of course, we'll take, whoops, yeah, we'll take questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kennickcheck, Mr. Lauer. We appreciate your presentation. Mr. Lauer, just to begin with, remind us when GSRP began?
1985.
Okay. So, GSRP is 37 years old. Very good. And it's 38th year.
38th year, correct.
Very good. Thank you so much. Board members, questions or comments? Dr. Pugh, Ms. Lipton?
My question is around the need, the demand, and then the availability of GSRP classrooms and childcare. And still just hearing in communities that there are applications that are being turned down, but there's also children that are in need, also the conversation around having the childcare, the help within childcare, just like, I guess, what are the barriers? And, you know, what are we seeing?
Sure. So, thank you, Dr. Pugh. So, we track the numbers very closely, both during the school year, as we are now, and also as we project out. So, what we, and ISDs can request a certain number of slots. And so, and then, we watch then how they fill those slots. And so, we spent some time this past fall with some ISDs who had requested slots but weren't able to fill them, because we wanted to learn from them. What barriers, to your very point, are you seeing? We also spent time with ISDs who'd filled all of their slots, and we asked them for what tips and strategies they used to do that. Primarily, what we heard from those that were struggling to fill the slots was staffing, and Richard talked about that. I know I spoke directly to two ISD superintendents that could have served, both of them could have served 250 more children if they had the appropriate staff. And so, that is a theme that we've seen across the state, is having enough staff to actually be able to open the classrooms that are needed. That was one of the most significant barriers, I would say. And in terms of some tips and techniques that some ISDs were employing was, we developed a general marketing campaign that ISDs could use and really tailored to their communities. And so, they used that, but they also did other types of marketing activities, billboards and Spotify ads and Instagram ads and those types of things. But in terms of the barrier, I would say staffing was the biggest barrier. And, well, Richard, if you want to, you've been involved in the conversations as well.
Correct. And so, the conversations, Dr. K is speaking to, Dr. Rice also participated in those with myself, as well as Chief Staff, Mark Howe. I was a very, Pat Sargent, my GSRP manager, also engaged in those conversations. We learned a lot about the barriers. I think, going on to the other part of your question, I believe you were asking, we do track the number of children in communities to be able to understand the number of providers needed to help the ISDs. So, we purchase on an annual basis the number of four-year-olds by income level from the U.S. Census Bureau directly. And so, we know each ISD, how many children, how many four-year-olds and three-year-olds, zero to 50, 50, 100, et cetera, up to 300%, and then over. We know total number of four-year-olds, et cetera. So, we have an idea exactly how many kids are in the community, and then, we give that to the ISDs for them to understand how many providers they actually need within their community. Now, they also use the Great Start Collaboratives, and they do community conversations, community scans, because they know better than we do where the density of the children are in the community and where the needs of the providers are. By law, we need to have providers, whether they're the local districts or community-based partners, childcare providers, private providers, to be at, in the former system, a three-star or higher level in great search quality, or at enhanced quality level in the new system. So, there are some requirements in terms of the quality level of the provider to be considered for GSRP. So, that's one of the things the ISD needs to take into consideration when considering new partners. But on an annual basis, once the ISD decides that, yes, we have an increase in funding, we have an increase in, we still have a need in the community, and there's these high-density areas, we then put out an annual call for new providers. We have a kind of an orientation, and then an application process. And then, they go through a vetting, making sure there's no licensing violations, there's, they're active, they're, they go through the presentation of what is involved in being a GSRP provider. And then, ultimately, they, if everything pans out, they then enter into, most likely, a tentative one-year and with options to extend. That's a typical process that goes on every ISD with new partners. And what can happen, to your question about turned down, is if there is a provider, let's say in a couple mile, a mile radius or so, if there are two providers in close proximity, and there are not enough children to be able to provide sufficient classrooms in both, then one provider will be turned down, if they're not the current provider. If they want to come into the system, they will be turned down as a provider. And what will happen, because we're not going to destabilize a current provider and take away slots from them in funding and give to another provider where they have a classroom of 16, or two classrooms of 32, you know, 32, we're not going to take money away from them, give to another provider just to increase them. We will work and see if they have ability, the existing provider, to increase capacity to serve those additional, or we will work with the ISD for those families that still exist to get them transportation to an adjacent provider. We want to serve those families, but if the provider that wants to step in can only serve seven families, there's only seven families, that's not enough to produce a viable, fiscally responsible, viable new entity. And they think they may be able to, but we don't want to set that provider up for failure. So, we will turn them down. Now, if the population changes, we will revisit that, will encourage the ISD to revisit that on. We'll encourage the ISD to revisit that on every two years or whatever. If population changes, providers can go out. During the pandemic, providers closed down. Now we have to reshuffle. That provider may come and say, hey, yeah, absolutely, there's more kids available. This provider shut down, this provider shut down, let's reshuffle. Now it's a new situation.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer.
Yes.
That was very.
Dr. Pugh, follow?
Yeah, that was very helpful. And then, obviously, like you said, there's this issue around transportation, and there is the opportunity for parents to choose what facility they want, what provider they want to go to. So hopefully, we're looking at those things as well. We're looking at the list because, just because they're in the same location, that does not mean that they're not pulling children from other locations and have the ability to transport, I would think, so.
Transportation is not required, but we are increasingly providing it.
Okay, and that's good. The other question that I had, and I might have raised this before, was around zoning issues within communities. I've heard from folks who've wanted to open up, in this particular case, it was at a faith-based, within a faith-based building. And there were some issues with them, with zoning. But it's an area where I know that there's been facilities, childcare facilities, that have been closed down but has a young population. So I'm not sure if we ever work with municipalities or anything in that regard as far as what the zoning looks like. In this situation where this place was located, it should have been a mixed-use zoning. There should have been the opportunity for there, if there was a church there right across the street, there had been a childcare facility. So I'm not sure, you know, if we're looking at this high need and we're looking at resources being made available, it's just things like we should be doing, obviously, whatever we can do with whatever entities that we can work with to help provide these opportunities for families.
We have many faith-based providers of GSRP as subrecipients. And so what tends to happen is not necessarily a zoning, that can be overcome. It typically is the age of the buildings when it comes to faith-based facilities and passing licensing inspections for fire.
Who does the licensing inspection, please?
Laura.
Okay, and Laura is, for those not in state government?
Department of Labor.
Licensing and Regulatory Affairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's passing licensing is the bigger issue with the older facility building of a faith-based entity. But it can happen, it's typically not zoning.
Okay, okay, I just think of ease of process.
Yeah, and the process is not streamlined, it is true. But it is also true that in a number of communities across the state that we are in faith-based institutions as subrecipients. And some of the faith-based institutions themselves are old. So they manage to figure out how to pass licensing. So it's not an immutable barrier, it's not a barrier that can't be addressed. It's just a little bit more challenging than with new construction, yeah.
And maybe we can, a thought about that, just popped in my head. I mean, we can reach out to those entities and have them do some peer-to-peer education.
I think that would be great. We managed to do it, this is how we did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's terrific, thank you. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you so much. So with your slides regarding the various proposals for the spring supplemental budget on slides eight, nine, and 10.
Yes.
The, are the, so I just want to make sure I understand. Are these sort of proposals that you are suggesting to the various appropriation committees? And then they will then pick from that? Or in terms of, I don't know, writing boilerplate or something like that? Or are you, I guess my question is, are you agnostic about these three proposals? Or do you have one that you're, you know, sort of advocating for over the others? I'm just curious in terms of how you envision the, this sort of, on and on, going forward now that we're in budget season?
Yes, I'll start with that and let Richard jump in. So we are very supportive of all of these proposals, as Dr. Rice is as well. We've put a tremendous amount of time into crafting these proposals and helping them get shepherded into the supplemental budget, so they are actually in the supplemental budget.
All of them?
In different forms.
In different forms.
Okay.
So the first one, again, incentivizes ISDs to go from four days a week to five days a week. Also incentivizes them, and CBOs as well, the community-based organizations, to go more than the minimum of 30 weeks. So you saw the numbers from 30 to perhaps 36 to 38. So that proposal came from us at the department and is in the current supplemental budget that we are anxiously awaiting legislative action on. In terms of transportation, as Richard said, that $18 million is actually not in the supplemental budget, but that's in the exact rec proposal. So on the transportation piece, which we're excited about and are certainly supportive to more than double the current allocation, which, again, Richard shared, the current allocation being $10 million. And then there are a couple of other pieces in the supplemental, again, that are in the language right now. One being a public awareness campaign, $10 million, directly related to creating more awareness around GSRP. And as Richard said, there's a $50 million allocation currently, again, in the supplemental that we're awaiting legislative action on around workforce needs and workforce development. And so what was shared with you, we've worked hard on. We begin with support of Dr. Rice and are pleased to see it in the supplemental. And now we are, again, awaiting the legislative action on that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I understand. So all of these have been put out there. I was under the impression when you numbered it one, two, and three, that it was sort of like, okay, and we're going to, you know, choose from one, but these are all out there?
In writing.
In writing, in some form, whether it's boilerplate or whether it's a separate, you know,
Correct.
line item or something like that. Okay, that's awesome. The next question I have is, in the data that you're providing in terms of your metrics, it sounds like it's just limited to GSRP. Where in your analysis, or do you include Head Start slots? Which is, I understand that's a federal program, but I think in some people's minds or perception, they might sort of conflate the two in terms of early childhood. So do you, are you including Head Start slots or funding in this particular proposal when we're looking at metrics?
So the metrics are GSRP only, to your point. Now, Richard, we'll talk a little bit about the GSRP Head Start blends, maybe. But there are other early childhood metrics. Head Start as a standalone program, Richard mentioned, early on, which is our zero-to-three early intervention program for youngsters with delays. There's early childhood special ed, which your service is primarily for four- and five-year-old children. So there are other possible metric programs. But what we shared this morning is just GSRP. Again, Richard, you know, if you have anything to add on it, maybe a GSRP Head Start blend.
Right, so the metrics were adopted by the previous board at the time when they were adopted and updated. So these are GSRP only. GSRP has three options, as I said, GSRP part day, which is minimum three hours, GSRP full day, which is equivalent to, you know, first grade, second grade, average, and then the GSRP Head Start blend. And that is equivalent to a full day because, but from a fiscal point of view, we only pay half the amount. And so, because it combines the fiscal GSRP half-day amount with the federal fiscal amount. And they have to adhere to both sets of standards for that full day of programming. So that's the blend option. And obviously, the children, well, not obviously, the children have to be duly eligible. So that means the children are in the 100% and below economic, you know, slide area. That is the only overlap with Head Start for these numbers.
Okay.
So when you see these numbers, they are GSRP except for the subpopulation that's duly eligible for GSRP Head Start that we serve. And that on, I don't have the breakout in front of me, but on average, it's about 5,500.
We just talked about that yesterday.
Yes, we did. So out of the $38,140 that I indicated was this year's final number that we funded and served as a state, about 5,500 are also Head Start, four-year-olds. So GSRP serves more four-year-olds than that 5,500.
Right, right, for sure.
About another 4,000, about another 4,000 kids, four-year-olds. They also serve three-year-olds and five-year-olds. But four-year-olds, they serve about 4,000 more four-year-olds.
Head Start does.
Head Start does. We don't account for those numbers.
Okay, that was my question. So there is a population of students that are getting served strictly by Head Start dollars that are being served in some fashion with an early childhood program based on Head Start standards that are not being captured in here. So the slots, if you will, that you're talking about in this graph may in fact be larger because some of those, I mean.
We could account for another 4,000 kids on here
Okay.
if we added Head Start to that.
Just Head Start only?
Exclusive.
Okay, perfect, that's, thank you.
We don't have the authority.
No.
To mandate Head Start to report to us.
That's right, exactly, you're right, that, that, thank you, though, that makes sense. Then another question I had is, you talked about the, does all of the GSRP funding flow through ISDs?
Yes.
Okay, so even when they are funding a non-school provider, the funding mechanism is from state budget allocation, and the department is just acting as a sort of an accountability, but the money is going to the ISD for providers, school-based or non-school-based, that are within their ISD district?
Correct, that's the structure.
And then there's the payment goes to the ISD.
Yeah, GSRP is funded through school aid fund. So by constitution, school aid dollars must go to a school district.
Yep.
And so the funds have to flow out of the department to a school district.
Okay.
The ISD was chosen, back in 2012, it was switched from local to regional system. The ISD is chosen as that school district to then be the hub for GSRP, to then create a system where they then flow money to subrecipients, which are the LEAs, PSAs, and a whole host of community-based providers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other questions, Ms. Tilly, and then Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you for the presentation, this was really good. I am so excited about the expansion of this program. Dr. Robinson and I went to NASB a few weeks ago. And one of the big topics, of course, at NASB is ECE and pre-K. And we are actually only one of a handful of states that are expanding the programming and putting dollars towards it. So I'm really thankful to Gretchen, to Governor Whitmer for that. And then I wanted to know, I asked there, you know, nationally, when will we see universal pre-K in all of our states? And found out that we're not looking at that until the end of this century. We might not even be alive with the projections that are happening right now to see universal pre-K in this nation. And we know how important it is for our, for our young ones to learn to read early. One of the arguments that I gave, and I also got a chance to lobby and speak to Senator Peters' office, Senator Stabenow's office about this topic as well. One of my arguments is that there was a study done a long time ago in Detroit about illiteracy. And at that time, the data came back that 30-something percent of Detroiters were illiterate. 60-something percent of Detroiters were functionally illiterate. Illiteracy can be generational, it can be cyclical. Because when you have parents that cannot read, grandparents that cannot read, they cannot teach those young ones how to read in their homes. And they can't help them with homework. So this is so necessary that we expand this program. My concern is one of the things that came up when Dr. Pugh asked her question, which is staffing. We have a teacher shortage going on. And so that, as we are rolling out the program to get new teachers, we also need to expand it to the pre-K component as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. And I'll have a thought on staffing before we, as we conclude. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you, just a quick question on proposal number one. Within an ISD, what if one of the, or one or more of the providers was ready, assuming the proposal goes through, was ready to go to five days, you know, and add that? Could that happen, or does it have to be the entire ISD?
No, the pot of money that's set aside for the expansion in terms of days and potentially weeks is by program. So $75 million that's set aside, with $75,000 going to whatever program wants to expand. So to your very point, Judy, you know, it can be programmed by program, can be complete ISD. So that's the way the dollars are fashioned.
Okay, all right, thank you. And to Tiffany's point and point you made about staffing, I think the other thing that possibly the public needs to be communicated to over and over again is the requirements for a teacher in GSRP are very, very high, as they should be. And I think sometimes, you know, people begin to think about, oh, daycare, you know, maybe they don't need a bachelor's degree, maybe they don't need to have pedagogy classes, et cetera, et cetera. And not that I'm disputing that, because I'm a strong supporter in the fact that those requirements do need to be high, but in the process then, difficult to find staff in the long run, as we're having across the board, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any other board members with any other comments? Going once, twice, thrice, cannot give it away. I want to underscore a couple of things that Dr. Kenneczek and Mr. Lauer said. Transportation is a challenge or a barrier. With respect to meeting our customers' needs, our parent customers, our student customers, moving from four days instructionally a week to five days instructionally a week, 30 weeks to 36 to 38 weeks instructionally a year helps meet our customers' needs. If I need childcare five days a week, irrespective of the power of the program, the quality of the program, if it is only four days a week for my child, it's not necessarily going to meet my need. I may love the quality in the four days a week, but if I don't have coverage in the fifth day a week, I'm going to opt for something that perhaps is of lower quality four days a week because I need that fifth day a week covered. We have to address that issue, that's a customer issue. And we've not addressed it in the state, and we have to address it in the state. So that's a piece. And the other piece is on staffing. Generally, we have a staffing issue in the state, that's true. But more specifically, we have a pre-kindergarten staffing issue. We have a pre-kindergarten staffing issue because we have poorly funded pre-kindergarten historically in the state. And so people that are certified to teach pre-kindergarten versus kindergarten may find out that simply by moving from teaching for-year- may find out that simply by moving from teaching four-year-olds to five-year-olds, I can make ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more a year. And these are not people that are making a million dollars a year, they're making very little a year. So by underfunding pre-kindergarten historically, we've underfunded pre-kindergarten teachers and we've diminished the supply of teachers available to teach our four-year-olds. Now, the good news is that in the last two years, we've increased the funding for GSRP preschool from seventy-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a full-day child, okay? Two slots, I know, I know a lot of, a lot of the old-timers among us think about it in terms of thirty-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per half-day slot. But it's in, but, but think about it as full day, seventy-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per kid two years ago to ninety-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per year now. And kudos to the governor, the legislature, for that increase, over that nineteen-hundred-dollar increase in per pupil money for GSRP preschool, including former Senator Bullock, who voted on that, thank you very much. That was hugely important. But note that the School Finance Research Collaborative Report, which was put out January of two thousand and eighteen, called at the time for fourteen thousand dollars plus per child for a full-year experience in GSRP, fifty percent more than the K-12-based funding, pre-weights. So we have a long way to go before we properly fund GSRP. GSRP needs, because of the ratios in GSRP, eight-to-one, sixteen-to-two, eighteen-to-three, because of those ratios, we have a long way to go before we're properly funding GSRP staffing to meet GSRP need in the state. That's really, really, really critical. So it's not just a general staffing need, it is a general staffing need, but it's bigger than a general staffing, it's a specific to pre-kindergarten staffing need as well. So I just share that with people because the idea that this is about growing the profession, it is in part, but it's in part about treating this particular element of the profession better than it has traditionally been treated. It has historically been treated as a stepchild. It is not acceptable, the very high-quality standard that we have with respect to the ratio and other things, but particularly with respect to the ratios. Again, eight-to-one, sixteen-to-two, eighteen-to-three, those ratios are expensive. And at once, we've had high-quality standards, ratios, and not high-quality money, and they're bumping up against one another right now. And this supplemental, which we advocated with the governor in the late fall, which she put forward to the legislature in the winter, which many legislative leaders agree is important, but which we continue to seek action on as we speak, that budget supplemental can help address these areas and help us push through the thirty-eight thousand student mark to the fifty, sixty, seventy thousand student mark over the next few years. And, and one hopes beyond that as, as well. So we appreciate our presenters, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
We, we are going to, uh, we are gonna pivot because we do have a little bit of time and we don't wanna miss any bit of that time and that opportunity for learning. And speaking of learning, it doesn't get better than learning from Teachers of the Year. Ms. Nanette Hansen, the current Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present her report. Ms. Hansen is a first-grade teacher at Lemur Elementary School in Escanaba Area Public Schools. Ms. Hansen has joined by Ms. Jennifer Sepetis. Sepetis.
Sepetis.
Sepetis, thank you. Region nine, Teacher of the Year, who is very gracious to remind me how to pronounce her name multiple times. She is a teacher at West Bloomfield High School, currently teaches AP US Government and Politics, Global Studies of Genocide and Positive Psychology. I saw her ears perk up when I mentioned psychology as part of social studies. She's taught for eighteen years, she is working on her PhD in Educational Leadership at Oakland University. We welcome our two Teachers of the Year and their flexibility in presenting late this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, it's always our pleasure to be here, but I'm so glad and excited that we got to present after the SAC that group of articulate young people who are talking about the real importance about building safe, inclusive relationships and safe, inclusive spaces for all of our students to be able to talk every day, allowing for their student voice to be heard. And it, and it ties directly into what we're talking about and presenting today. So I am going to turn it over to my colleague Jennifer, Region nine Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me to talk to you today about a topic that I am incredibly passionate about because it affects all of our Michigan families and students. And it was wonderful to hear the students today speak about student mental health. As Dr. Rice said, I've been a teacher for eighteen years. I'm currently the Social Studies Department Chair at West Bloomfield High School, and I did have some questions about economics. I was really listening to the finance presentation, so it was hard not to, to jump in with my questions. I'm currently teaching AP US Government and Politics, Global Studies of Genocide and Positive Psychology, which is a new course that I created for students. Always a student myself, I will receive an Ed Specialist Degree in just three weeks. I'm also working, thank you, on a PhD in Educational Leadership in Oakland University. My research over the past three years has been on student mental health. Some additional background on me is, there's a picture there. In July, um, twenty-twenty-two, I traveled, um, to Auschwitz, Birkenau, through the Memorial Foundation and traveled to Poland to study the Holocaust. This July, I will be traveling to Armenia as one of fifteen educators from across the US and the only teacher from Michigan to learn more about the Armenian genocide and to help then teach other educators about it. Over the course of my teaching career, I've noticed more students are struggling with their mental health. Around twenty-twenty-two, at the onset of the pandemic, I started to wonder, what can Michigan schools do to help support the mental health of students? And now, over the course of three years, I've been considering this essential question. There are two strong areas where we can help support our students, parents, schools, and the community of Michigan. One is through expanded school mental health programs and two is through evidence-based mental health programming. Before the pandemic, the CDC estimated one in five children experience a mental, emotional, or behavioral disorder, including anxiety, depression, ADHD, and disruptive behavior disorder. Yet only twenty percent received care from a specialized mental health provider. So I was wondering, what are we doing now to help support the children? And why are so many children not receiving care? Student data in the US is detailed on this, on one side, and I want us to look at the Michigan data. One in six youth experiences a mental health disorder each year. A hundred and nineteen thousand Michiganders aged twelve to seventeen have depression. High school students with depression are more likely to drop out. Almost fifty-eight percent of Michiganders aged twelve to seventeen who have depression do not receive any care, or have not received any care in the past year. I wondered what is contributing to the mental health issues and depression? Why are so many students not receiving care? Is there anything I can do as a teacher? During the pandemic, I asked myself those questions. As our school went virtual, I started surveying my students every week to check in, to see how they were feeling physically and emotionally. I was really concerned about how many students were suffering in silence, and I was overwhelmed by a sense of responsibility to help them. What can one teacher do? As I began my coursework at Oakland University, I focused my research on student mental health. In May, twenty-twenty-two, I surveyed the students and staff at West Bloomfield High School. Seventy-five percent of students indicated academic stress often impacts their mental health. Fifty-five percent of students indicated anxiety often impacts their mental health. Thirty-six percent of students indicated depression often impacts their mental health. Thirty-four percent of students indicated family stress often impacts their mental he- health. Armed with these percentages, I wondered what could the community, the school, the staff, parents, and students do to find wellness? It wasn't just a problem in our school. Stress and anxiety are in all of our Michigan schools. The programs I researched cost money. I didn't want an already burdened staff to take on additional responsibilities. I remembered reading about a course called Psychology and the Good Life at Yale University, and that became the most popular class in the history of the college. In twenty-eighteen, more than twelve hundred students enrolled in it. Positive psychology is now taught at universities across the country. Why not develop a course like this for high school students? I developed a one-semester elective course for students in grades nine through twelve. I wanted all of our students to have the opportunity to enroll in it as first-year students or even as a student with one semester left of high school. During the first week of class, I asked students to anonymously fill out a sticky note and write down something that was causing them stress or anxiety. Students turned in the notes face-down on my desk. I placed the sticky notes on a poster for students to review the next day. The posters are currently hung up outside for you to view during our lunch break. One poster is from the first semester, the very beginning, and the second one is from my second semester class. I cried each time I read the boards. It is an overwhelming amount of pain that the students are sharing with us. And I would encourage you to go out and take a look, oh, they're right here, because it's in their writing. But something transformative, transformational happened from this. Each student realized everyone is going through something. They were not alone. So many students are lonely, anxious, and have past trauma. I reminded them to be kind to everyone every day because this is what they are trying to manage. I also told them that this course was not about solving all of these problems on the poster because I couldn't do that. The course, however, would help them learn positive interventions and resilience interventions as well as cognitive strategies to manage anxiety and increase positive emotions. The information that we study is evidence-based on happiness, well-being, grit, resilience, growth mindsets, character strengths, mindfulness, hope, and gratitude. And then through surveying, we can compare the social and emotional growth from the beginning of the course to the end. The course examines, um, some student outcomes from some major contributors like Martin Seligman, Barbara Froderickson from the Broaden and Build Theory, Using Positive Emotions is Important to Survival, grit from Angela Duckworth, The Flow State from Chik Sent Me High, examining psychological research, things like the hedonic treadmill, and applying the main dimensions of well-being. We also practice mindfulness and meditation every day, practice gratitude and understanding that you have to work at being happy. It doesn't just happen. I wanted to share some feedback from the students who completed the course in January twenty-twenty-three with me. Quote, "After taking this class, I've taken in a lot of great advice and information to help with achieving happiness and reducing negative emotions. I will be using a lot of what I have learned about positive psychology throughout my life. Many people live with a false reality of what happiness really is and what it looks like. I believe everyone has the right to feel good about themselves and be happy within their own minds. I'm so happy I took this cla- I'm so glad I took this class because I feel like I can apply some of what I learned into my life currently and in my adulthood. I can also become a mentor to others who are going through a hard time. In a world where we are surrounded by so much negativity, it is better to be positive." Second one. "This class shaped how I think about and view myself and mental health and helped me learn all the resources and strategies that I can take with me forever as a key to being more positive, happy person. It is a highly valuable class that everyone should take and the lessons to help students understand themselves and those around them on a deeper level." Third one. "I've used guided breathing almost whenever I have either a presentation or a test since I always have anxiety during them, and they work to calm me down really well. Thank you for teaching me things that'll be used for like the rest of my life. And I used my breathing before I came up here."
Thanks, Jennifer, for those testimonials are very telling about the needs that our students have in the high school. And since the pandemic, children's mental health specifically has taken a real hit. According to the CDC, it's shown that there are, is a huge uptick in mental health-related emergency department visits. And even at my lowest primary level in first grade, I have seen an inability to persevere, to have grit. Kids are more fatigued midday. They have, uh, a real tendency to get frustrated and give up very quickly instead of taking a rest that they need and then carrying on. The, uh, the number of young people experiencing sadness, hopelessness, depression, anxiety, and thoughts of suicide has increased dramatically, according to the CDC. And just like in teaching, there's a shortage of professionals who can help our most struggling people. And in rural communities, lots that are found in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, we are very underserved. Most, many counties in the UP have very few or no psychiatrists nor psychologists to help serve our neediest populations. In addition, in Escanaba, we have one school nurse that services all of our buildings for a week for our students. I feel like we need to do a better job prioritizing our students' health and well-being. In our community in Escanaba, Michigan, we are beginning to build a means in which we can identify and help our neediest students as early as possible. We are trying to build and establish a pathway for our students who show a need for expanding student mental health supports. In each of our buildings, we are developing systems in which we collect data from our tiered interventions, and then we take that data and gather as a team to put in place further supports who's, for students who are struggling. We're trying to expand and build our student mental health supports. Fortunately, with the governor's budget, Escanaba has received thirty-one N money and through the ISD, with our partnership with them, Escanaba receives direct student services from our thirty-one mental health therapists, which serves the general education students who are experiencing mild to moderate mental health issues. And most importantly, we are putting additional supports into place in our districts by implementing and offering and building positive, social, emotional skills and giving our kids tools and training that they need to persevere. We are using the program, Leader and Me, and it starts in beginner garden at the most primary levels. Because we are seeing behaviors related to the ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, we know that when we teach students how to manage. we know that when we teach students how to manage their emotions and social interactions in reasonable ways and we build safe, positive, meaningful spaces and relationships that our students and teachers can thrive in their educational setting. Our upper grades are utilizing the TRAIL social and emotional framework. The TRAIL stands for transforming research into action to improve the lives of students. And they use the five competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. And we have seen a real increase in the ability for our kids at the very youngest level to be able to voice the needs that they have for the feel- for the emotions that they're feeling. These are great starting points, but we still need more supports. So how can we in rural schools support students, families and staff with the increased demand for mental health supports and not only with kids, but with students and staff in the in the in our buildings? While the lens was really magnified during the pandemic, the need for supports still exists. And we need to find an ongoing way to support our students and families. An ongoing support system which includes financial financial support and other resources. In our small area, we have partnered with Project Aware, stands for advancing wellness and resilience in education. It's a five-year program. We're in the third year of it and my fear is what happens after year five? After we have spent all of this time laying the foundation for our students to have the supports, what will happen after that year five? The three tenants of Project Aware are improving coordination to increase awareness of youth mental health issues, providing mental health support training to youth-facing adults, and increasing youth access to mental health services. And we're doing all of these. It's the starting point of it. But what we definitely need to do is to continue to support schools and their effort efforts to maintain long-term funding to expand and provide healthcare services. Minimally include access to positive mental health supports, school nurses and general care to support our students and families. I feel really encouraged that services are growing and expanding, but I want to make sure that it's sustainable and that our kids continue to have access to high-quality mental health services and tools.
Um, thank you, Nanette. So besides the class, I was wondering what else can we all do to help support students' mental health in schools? Expanded school mental health programs can make a significant difference for students because typically there is a team of staff, therapists, administrators and parents working together. Schools are often partnered with community health clinics, so there are therapists on site. It's important to note that expanded school mental health programs do not replace our school psychologists, social workers or counselors. But these programs help support the current school staff who are absolutely overburdened with students in need of mental health support. And you'll see that as you look at the sticky notes there. Okay, then we're onto the next one. So thank you to Governor Whitmer and the Michigan Legislature for twenty-one N school-based mental health funding as well as thirty-one O funding, which districts can use to hire school psychologists, school social workers, school counselors or school nurses. And thank you to Dr. Rice and the M D E for your continued effort. Michigan received a National Governors Association grant to seek out student voice for S E L and M D E and also received a Michigan Health Endowment Fund. Michigan has two hundred school-based health centers. Axford High School, which is about twenty miles from West Blenheim Field High School, is receiving funding to set up a mental health program. More expanded school mental health programs are needed because the research shows that they are effective. The pros and the cons of these programs. The pros of securing programs for our students in Michigan outweigh the disadvantages. Results show improvements in mental health, stressing coping, school problems, academic achievement as well as health literacy. The challenges, while not small, um, can be um, can be done. It's the funding, the space in the schools as well as the time that students may need during the school day or earlier before school for after school for appointments.
So what is our call to action? Well, we minimally need student mental health supports and they should be available to all students at the most primary levels all the way through twelfth grade. We have a need for evidence-based programs in all of our districts in Michigan.
Positive psychology is one possible course for high school students and one could even be tailored to middle school students. Expanded school mental health programs would absolutely help as well as hiring more psychologists, school nurses, counselors and social workers. As well as more professional development is needed to help staff identify students who are struggling with their mental health without adding more responsibilities to teachers.
And we really thought that this last one, pre-service teachers, teaching them the most important piece is understanding and building that relationship, those safe spaces. It goes back to what our S A C students were saying, that they're telling us what they need. We teach these pre-service teachers at the most basic level to build relationships, understanding how important students' mental health is to their success and their well-being and that we can start early before they get into the teaching profession and teach them to build and connect with those students to make them successful and and feel accepted, you know, through every every level of schooling. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to both our outstanding teachers of the year. Board members' questions. Dr. Robinson.
Well, first of all, thank you. You've hit, I think, maybe the most important issue happening in schools right now. Just a couple of thoughts as you were as you were explaining it. I wrote an article a few years ago and I mentioned in the article, I thought we we were at the verge of a public health epidemic. And the reviewers of the journal said, no, that's hyperbole. You can't say that yet. And I think, first of all, I I argued to keep it in the article because I think it is uh, was important and that was before the pandemic. I don't know that the pandemic necessarily created all these issues, but it's revealed a lot of them. And I want to make sure that we add, without detracting from the importance of mental health services and just recognition and awareness for students, this is also an issue for teachers and all of the adults that work in schools, from bus drivers to cafeteria workers to custodians to whomever. I think everybody is struggling with all of these issues. The what I hear from my teacher friends is that they are making decisions now now about teaching content or teaching kids how to do school. Just the process of taking the bus ride, getting off the bus, walking into the building, going from class to class if you're an elementary kid, working with your colleagues in group work if you're an older child. So we need some kind of supports to get us through so we can get back to teaching as much content without ignoring the fact that we do need to teach kids how to do school and how to kind of do life as you're you're putting out here. I I see this at home with my own two children. I see it at school and I don't think that the rhetoric around that that is mocking and attacking social and emotional learning or LGBT kids and adults is helping. I think it's hurting. So I think we need to recognize those aspects as well. I think a course like your positive psychology class is at least as worthwhile and useful as a personal finance class. And I think it would recognize that we value people as much as we do money and finances and investing and and all those things. And finally, I think obviously your call here is for more counselors, school nurses, psychologists and school health clinics. In in short, the caring adults that can support kids who are having struggles like this and really support all kids. Every time I hear about I E Ps or special education accommodations, I think, wow, what if we did that for every child? Instead of just for the kids that that we have kind of put in these certain populations, I think every kid would benefit from an I E P or from an individualized plan of some sort or from these kind of supports. Too many kids do not ask for help when they need it and I think that extends to adults as well. So thank you for putting some light on this. I think it's really important.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Other board members. Mr. Bowles.
I want to second all of that. Finding the safe spaces, how do we achieve that without the students being targeted after, you know, so you're going to see the therapist. Other children know, other youth know you're going to see the therapist. And we live in the age of social media bullying and things like that. We have to be mindful of. And he said the other part that it was really on my mind was everybody in the building needs some behavior support. I'm 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 a person that doesn't use mental health. A lot of folks in my family had behavioral unique character traits. And so we don't use mental the word mental health because there's a stigma with that, especially in the black community when I was growing up, just even trying to ignore simple things like Alzheimer's or, you know, or dementia. In addition to that, I was going to, there is a a level of well, I came from an era where behavioral wellness was criminalized. And now we live in a in an era where it's it's being touted for, you know, we we're trying to find, what's the word I want to?
We're normalizing it?
We've we're, I don't know if we're normalizing, we're finding we're finding solutions outside of criminal punishment. You know, we're finding all of this therapeutic intervention and finding ways and resources instead of the criminalize the community. And so I think that's hard for us to transition from in the in the in the black community. And so the words matter. So we want to, I want to, I want, I want us to try to find words that create a safer, more thoughtful therapeutic environment as we move forward in this because this is real everyday life things. And I I think it's just important, this personal finance, because if I can't get my finances together, I'm stressed out. Now I'm hurting somebody or I'm robbing somebody. So um, I think, I grew up in a house with an addict. So, you know, my father got locked up a few times just based on that instead of being treated with a human concept of there wasn't, there is was unwell. I don't, I don't know if I'm, yeah, you know, so those are the 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 things that just ran through my mind. Well, I think this is wonderful. I think we have to find an overall strategy or change a set of terms or words that are more universally accepted and how we educate, like we educate the students and the teachers in the school that it's okay not to be okay. So that when someone does go see the therapist, it's okay to go see the therapist, you know. But I, you know, I I find this helpful. It's great to see that we're on the right track and making some steps, step some strides in the into uh, being thoughtful about community.
There is that work to de-stigmatize uh, mental health challenges that takes place in pockets of the state. So you should be aware, you should be aware of that.
And decriminalize, criminalize, be stigmatized now so hard.
Yeah. Criminalize as well. Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly right. Mr. McMillan.
Yes, I'd be remiss to not bring up something that I I brought up a little while ago that was somewhat controversial. But I also think that compulsory education laws um, need to be changed when it comes to kids with mental health, that giving parents the opportunity to do what's best for the child, whether or not it means how many hours they spend at the school. And these parents may not have the opportunity to do full-time homeschooling, but there is, as you mentioned, a lot of, a lot of them are impacted by the stress of school, by bullying, by just um, being forced to to be somewhere that maybe is not the best environment for them. And parents worrying about police knocking on their door and saying, where's your children? Is not something that's helpful when when they're forced, when they're trying to focus on their child and the mental health issues. They need as much as much flexibility as they can. And I know Dr. Rice said that it's kind of, you know, police will kind of wink and nod and say, don't worry about it. But I think statutorily, they it needs to be changed. And and that would also mean that I think industries would come up that could actually help these children if they knew that by suggesting that maybe they shouldn't be in school but somewhere else for their mental health, right now you'd be saying, well, I'm going to help you commit a crime, truancy. If we changed it so they said, no, we're going to focus on what's best for your child, whether it means at this location or this location. You know, I think that would be a great help and businesses and ideas and nonprofits would flourish. They would come to the and there'd be a plethora of options for parents who have kids with the mental health issues. And and the focus could be helping that first and then, and I think there could also be a reduction in violence and and issues that come about at school. So I wanted to just mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other other board members, other reflections from other board members going once, twice, thrice? If I could just appreciate your lifting up thirty-one N funding, thirty-one O funding, two hundred and forty million dollars to hire helping professionals across the state. More than six hundred hired when thirty-one O funding was started. That that funding was was administered in the Office of Health, continues to be administered in the Office of Health and Nutrition Services led by Dr. Diane Golzinski. But you've also noted the thirty-one N funding and and just a shout out to people in that that office. Dr. Golzinski, Amy Allen is, Mike Lehtad, Scott Hutchins, Lisa Gallagher now retired, Amy Wassman. I also want to mention thirty-one P funding, thirty-one double A funding, which the governor has put in her executive budget, which would expand per pupil children's mental health funding for another two years. It's another hundred and fifty million times two, three hundred million dollars over the next two years. Important to to note. And then the only other thing that I'd like to share is that while we hired more than sit, well, local school districts and ISDs asked for six hundred plus helping professionals with that money. One imagines that if there were greater markets of helping professionals, nurses, counselors, guidance, school social workers, school psychs, that the ask would have been for three times that that amount. So some of this is in about funding, but some of this is about the availability of staffing. Some of it is about the professional development and training of people as they come up. Some of it is about our systems within children's mental health. Some of it is about the interpersonal among with respect to to children's mental health. I think kids of a particular age are a lot more aware than we were back in the day that there are challenges and and to to help kids with respect to those challenges of a particular age. And I think you have to get beyond a particular point in your development to get there. I think kids are a lot more, I think they watch out for one another a lot more than they did back in the day. And some have been actively trained on signs of anxiety and depression. It's not to say that they're, you know, child psychologist, that's not the point at all. But people who are aware of signs of challenge or stress, anxiety and 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 depression in their peers are able to to say something to adults and help that young person or young people get support. We appreciate you. We appreciate your sharing today on a difficult topic. President Pugh, bring us home. Yours is a benediction.
You said something that just, it made me think that, which is dangerous sometimes. But, but you know what? You just said about how, how children are able to help their fellow classmates and how educators are much more aware, and it just makes me have to say that schools provide safe spaces, that when children are not in schools, we don't know if they have those safe spaces. And I think that as board members, um, here, we should be thinking about the fact that children are in schools and in school buildings. That should just be a, a, a basic principle that, that I think that we should, that we should hold, that schools are safe spaces, to say that children should have out, that we should promote that. It's concerning to me.